And for the investigation report. It is March 1st, a very immediate summer. Meeting is hybrid conference and it's also live stream on channel. Requesting public comments or station. We accept it between 5:00 p.m. and 30:00 p.m. By sending an email with your name, phone number, topic, your background, your position, area, and future. How to take all that and speak in the US. That's Rod R. L. D. Y. M. You receive a phone call, very public comments where you will be able to speak and address the board on asking three minutes. On issues within the board's standing. Forum will be rented to 30 minutes. If you're in person. You may address the board on asking one or three minutes on issues within the board's standing. Each speaker wants to fill out public comment, probably see the board quote, quote, quote. Request for second public comments. We accept it between 7:00 and 7:30 p.m. in the same manner. Second public comments, particularly aspiring to German, and later we find it's coming in second forum. In limited ten minutes. When the event board has not finished addressing all items listed on today's agenda. The only reason is that our on our second. To finish the agenda. We have motion to move into executive session. I don't see any hands. But we can't see yours.
Uh, Mr. Chair. I move that we go into the executive session for the following reasons. To, uh, for employment matter. Now, reputation report. Pursuant to South Carolina code. It's recording. 74, 78, 1. Adult home school report pursuant to the South Carolina code section 34, 40, A4. And discussion of proposed vendor selection technology assessment services on plan. RFP number 22, dash O13. Pursuant to South Carolina code. Section 34, Saturday, May 2.
Motion from third line. Second line. Ms. Fisher. Discussion. Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. How could you tell me in pursuant of the employment matter, pursuant to our application for. Uh, under section 30, dash 4, 78. Uh, who will be advising the board on that?
Dr. R. L. D. Y. M.
What do you want to say, excuse me?
Ms. Wall will be advising the board on, uh, question on the issue.
And, and also how the discussion of the. Actually, that, that's an idea.
See no other hands. All of us agree. Aye.
Aye.
No, she can't.
Ms. Nelson, aye.
Tina's not on, correct?
I'm sorry.
I was looking, saying Tina's not on.
No, Tina.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move we approve the Superintendent's recommendations for employment listed on February 1st, February 28, 2022 personnel recommendation report.
Second motion. Under my name is all those who favor it, aye?
Aye.
What's that?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay. Anomalous.
I move we approve the Superintendent's recommendation for the monthly adult education home school before, for February 2022.
Second motion. Second motion. Under my name is all those who favor it, aye?
Aye.
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 And finally, I move that the board authorize the superintendent to issue a notice of award to Plant and Moran
ELLC to provide technology assessment services as described in RFP 22013. The board authorizes the superintendent to execute contract within the term upon expiration of the forecast period.
I'll take that one. Mr. Speaker, second. Under my name is all those who favor it, aye?
Aye.
Dr. Hensley.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
That's what everyone wants to action with this afternoon's session.
Assistant. Aye. Nice to be in approval of the agenda.
I move we adjourn.
Second. You will go right. Motion seconded by Mr. Melvin. Discussion. Raise your hand all those who favor it, aye?
Aye.
Anomalous. We can stand for the pledge, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the moment of silence, please. Thank you. Media has been notified. Our next wife is streaming performance by reference L. Andrew Corpray, performing "This Is Me" under the direction of the NFT Kelly Turner.
I'm going to ask Mr. Flannigan.
Take you to the dark highway. They say they don't want your wicked parts. I learned to be ashamed of hearts and scars. Run away. They say the world's too big for you. But I'm not. I'm not. I'm not. Oh, yeah. When the shadows come down, I'm gonna hide. I am ready, my hand rules. I'm meant to be, this is me. There I am. And I'm watching out. I get to be seen. Oh, I'm here, this is me. Oh. 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 The night, the voice is knocking. We're all fighting with the class today. All that's your chance, make it. We are fighting with our hands, we ain't afraid. And all the time, we are one. We are, and that's what we become. No more hat, don't break me down with dust. I know that there's a place above. Oh, yeah, glory, yeah. When the shadows come down, I'm gonna hide. I'm gonna take this time to the ground. I am ready, I am bruised. I am who I'm meant to be. Look at how I'm taking my time. It's time to be a god. I am ready to be seen. Oh, I'm here, this is me. Oh. 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 Oh, no. This is me. Oh. 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 When the shadows come down, I'm gonna take this time to the ground. I'm gonna say, this is Bruce, this is who I'm meant to be, this is me. Look at how I'm taking my time. And I'm watching out to be a god. I'm not scared to be seen. I make nobody listen to me. Oh. 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 Oh, no. This is me.
Thank you for having us.
Oh, thank you.
Like you said, that's the best thing for all of them.
Thank you. And I just want to thank our parents who went out. We had a lot of great support, so thank you, thank you. This is an amazing job. I just looked at Ms. Turner, I'm like, hey, um, they have a spot we can probably perform at the board meeting. She's like, I'll get something together. You did an awesome job. So, thank you, thank you. And thank you to our kids coming out. You did a great job. So proud.
I think you'll agree that's been missing. Long time ago then. The next item of the points of celebration is our January Student of the Month for Northern Beaufort County. Character Ed for January. Our character education program was formed to support parents' efforts to develop good character in their children. Tonight, we're celebrating the Character Ed Student of the Month exhibiting the character trait of perseverance. Perseverance is defined as pursuing worthy objectives with determination and patience while exhibiting fortitude when confronted with failure. We're happy to announce that our Character Education Student of the Month for Nor- for Northern Beaufort County for January is Tristan B. from Joseph Shankman Elementary School. Would you come up here, please? And if mom and dad or any other family member could come up as well. Tristan is with us tonight, and I'm glad he's up here with me at the moment. I want to share a little bit about him. Mrs. Williams and Ms. Jenkins, kindergarten class at Joseph Shankman Elementary School, nominated Tristan as the Student Leader of the Month for January's Character Trait Perseverance and Leader in Mean Habits, Begin With the End in Mind and Put First Things First. At the beginning of the school year, his teachers had to push him to start assignment because he did not like to write in one. Since then, he has practiced and strengthened his pencil grit, making him more confident and determined to finish his work. He has especially shown perseverance in math when it comes to subtraction problems. If he does not understand what to do, he will ask a classmate or teacher for help. What is most special is that he will encourage others by using the words that he hears his teachers say to him. He is determined to put first things first in the classroom. He also sometimes corrects himself and does things like going back to his seat and trying again when he catches himself trying to run in the classroom. He also encourages others, especially his best friend in his class, to keep trying and to not give up. His teachers and classmates are proud of him for all of his hard work and perseverance. I want to congratulate Tristan, and I have for you, Tristan, the certificate recognition for your hard work and your perseverance. Everyone. Next item on the agenda this evening is a game ball presentation. I wanted, this is an award that I give out very actively when we catch outstanding things and excellence happening across our school district. And so this evening, I want to give the game ball, Beaufort County School District, to Dr. Nikia Campbell for her hard work. Now, thank you, Mr. Speaker. And for the next, and the next week, our first ever American Youth Movement Conference, Dr. Nikia Campbell.
Hi. Wow, I thought I had a update. Do I still have it?
You still have it. Yeah.
Thank you so much for this game ball and even a lot. Um, like I said yesterday, it's not a pie, it's a team, so this represents the work of the team. And I just hope that the board members today will see the need to continue this annual conference for not only our teachers but our community. So I appreciate it, and thank you.
The next item that I want to recognize this evening on the points of celebration is really a partnership that the school district has with the Gullah Farmers Co-op. This partnership is a very exciting initiative involving not only the Beaufort County School District, Sedexo, and the Gullah Farmers Co-op. I had an opportunity to visit out at the Gullah Farmers Co-op building and then also go out to meet one of the local farms. What's exciting about this initiative is that our school district will be buying produce from our local farms in St. Helens, our local Gullah farm in St. Helens. So this is a really important. I'm happy to be here this evening. Uh, if you would come up and join us for the presentation, uh, those of you that are here. Mr. Glover, are you here? Thank you. Perfect, come on up. Uh, before I give them a chance to speak a little bit about this, this is, this is really a critical and a really exciting opportunity for us. Our students, uh, can go out on a field trip, right? And go to the farm, see the produce being grown out there. Go over to the co-op building, see the packaging as it happens. Go back to their school and have lunch and eat this nutritious meal, right? That comes from our very own local farm here in our St. Helens community in the Gullah building, the Farmers Co-op. We have a video that I want to show first and showcase, and then, uh, I want to turn it over to this great video.
The Beaufort County School District is excited about this new initiative partnering with our local farmers here from the Gullah Farmers Co-op. The Gullah Farmers Cooperative is a group of, um, small farmers coming together to sell their produce.
We formed the cooperative about 12 years ago because of the problems that small farmers were having. After they grew their product, they didn't have any market, couldn't get rid of it. So we figured we'd bring the group together and start a cooperative, put all our produce together, package, get market for it, that that would be a big help for the farmers.
The reason the Gullah Co-op got started, we were looking for an opportunity for farmers to sell products other than going to a farmer's market when it got saturated, um, with surplus product, having another venue, and wholesale became the other venue. So the cooperative got started to provide a wholesale outlet for small farmers.
So for our local farmers, it's important for them to get their product out. And, uh, what a better way for us is to just bring it straight to the table with the kids and produce a great product for them to try. I think kids are a lot more willing to try something if they know it came from a farm right here in Beaufort.
In this area on St. Helena, uh, it has some of the best soil and climate to grow vegetables. And we want to maintain that primarily because if we can maintain a productive land, we can actually maintain a productive culture. And the land and the culture goes hand in hand.
We do collars and cabbage, cucumbers, squash, peppers, corn, but tomatoes, I think, is the big crop that we grow and, uh, people sell and buy them.
Right now, working with the Clemson Extension Service, we are experimenting with romaine lettuce. And romaine lettuce will be our chief commodity with the school district because the school district is serving that every day in the salad bar.
When we get the product in, we can automatically tell that it's our Gullah Farmers product that's coming into the schools. The, uh, product is, it doesn't, it's not handled as much as a product that has been produced and trucked. They cut it here and it gets delivered. You can tell the freshness, it is so refreshing to have that kind of product come in because it gives us longer shelf life that we're able to bring and produce more items out of the one product for these students.
It gives us an opportunity to support our local farmers here in Beaufort County. And our children can get a chance to eat fresh produce that comes right from here, right from their backyard here in Beaufort County.
Bringing product that comes straight from the field to the school is very important. I think the educational part of it that we're planning on doing, it's great for the kids to understand where their produce comes from. It's not the grocery store, it's actually the field. We're producing our monthly seasoning based on recipes that we have in our system. So our schools and our managers will be able to take whatever product that we do get or we highlight as the monthly. We do plan on using other items, but we do want to highlight one product per month, so there's an educational piece behind it.
When you get products fresh from the garden, take it to the cafeteria and cook it the next day, it has a different taste to it. And the kids will certainly eat it, and they like it because of the freshness.
Sometimes the school is where their kids are going to actually get their great nutrition from. So it's important for us to bring that to them. So having local fresh product is very important because then we get to take and process that and put it on their plate for them to try.
If it's fresh, the kids will eat it.
And local is always better. I mean, it always tastes better. And again, the fact that we're able to use the local product and help our farmers as much as they're helping us, I think it's just, you know, it's just such a great partnership.
One of the neat outcomes from a partnership like this is that our children get a chance to eat healthy foods that come right from our local area and so important for a good nutrition in an educational environment. We want our students to be well nourished while they get ready to learn all the studies that they're engaged in.
Thank you all. I just want, I just want you all, can you be okay? I just want you all to know what a process this has been and literally how many years this sacred commitment has happened. And I just want to just publicly congratulate you guys because there's so much by way of regulatory compliance to get into that, that supply chain. And these guys just never gave up, and they're just in such a great job, so I'm, I'm just sort of happy to part with you.
Thank you all for inviting us to come and share this little time with you. One thing, Larry, it's a test, though, because we've been working at this thing for a long time. And these over 10, 11 years, we've been trying to put it together. We started a few years back bringing fresh produce to music kind of schools about four, five years ago, some of it proper remnant of it. But what we'd like to do is let you kind of set an example for the rest of South Carolina as to what we can do when this community and the school work together and we can still arrest it in state and the world, what can happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, it's been a pleasure. It's like Mr. McDowell, sir, we, we were at this probably, um, 12 years time when I was in Clemson, and we got together and we met with the school district, DSS, county government. Everybody coming together to say, how can we, uh, do the farm and school project? And one of the key components to doing it was the school district. And the superintendents down the line has embraced this concept as we really moved forward with it and we have. And we appreciate Dr. Aguirre's carrying that torch as well because it's so important to have the school district endorsing this project. But more importantly, also Sedesco being a partner with us, it's, it's really has taken it to a different level. And I say that because Larry has been really working with the co-op to give our food in the chain market. We were delivering on a weekly basis, school by school by school, and we were actually following Limehouse distributor. So they were wanting to change school, taking their product, we're taking our product. Limehouse had a lot of product on theirs. We only had a few. Larry has really worked with Limehouse and Limehouse will be a distributor for us. So we'll be taking our product to Limehouse in the future and they will then be distributing it. And that connection is saving us that transportation that we were doing, that we don't have to do again. And, but the school district is still buying from us, not Limehouse. So we appreciate it. Before I sit down, I, I mean, before I leave my podium, I do want to say that I do endorse, you're going to hear some speakers tonight from the community. I do endorse their effort to save our mascot. There's a difference between, and being an extension agent, birds of prey is one of my favorite birds, all my favorite birds. And there's a difference between bald eagle and a golden eagle and ostrich. St. Helena mascot was, and Buford High is kicking it on, the golden bald eagle. That should always be the mascot, that's any legislation at this time. So I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you, Lewis, our points of celebration.
Thank you. An initiative with all the farmers co-op, you can feel people scrawling up with pride over that, that would be feel.
Welcome in. And I would just say to you what I shared with them that they, when you're out on the field, which is that, I grew up in Miami. So because of my nature, I am a city boy, but I, but I learned quite a bit just sitting out with them, talking about it. And I was just impressed by, you know, their, they even have a number of side for our kids.
But they mentioned they're a good store, they're a good plant, but they didn't mention also they're a good farm. Okay, moving on to public comments. We have quite a few this evening. I will just point out to folks that by policy, we cannot respond. We listen to your comments, but we, we can't respond to you tonight. Mr. R. B.
You my time back to myself.
I'm sure I understood. Sure, sure. I say that, we'll see if we follow through or not. Mr. Julius Green Jr.
Eagle, bald eagle is our mascot. My mom and dad grew up on eagle on St. Helena Island. And I think that needs to be replaced and not altered. And someone need to fix that as soon as possible.
Your voice.
Good evening. To the bold, to Dr. Aguirre, to everyone that's here today. It's, when I'm here, usually here for points of celebration, student achievement, that's what we saw tonight. But at this point, I am saddened. I'm saddened to be here with this occasion. Furthermore, a lack of understanding as to what's going on. Serving the Buford County system 50 years, 50 years for the high school, for the community. And I learned very proud of that. For 30 years, was trying to get the administration to come up with something to show the uniqueness of Buford County, the high schools. And I want to make it clear tonight on my time run out that I had no knowledge about the replica that's underneath it. Their skin under the radar. Had I known that and they know me, I would have said something and perhaps tried with your sprint. Mrs. Summers, which is a great principal of mine, and when I talked to her and I told her about what we want to do about the eagle, I mean, about the spitters that's in the building. And those spitters appear not seen it yet, please stop by Buford High. Because with a committee of 15 people, Mrs. One from Buford County, Ms. Vane, St. Helena, Sola Gardner, and Jerry C. from Robert Smalls, got together for seven months and worked together to put this together. It wasn't nothing that was done by intention. And we hope that people, when they come eat, they see what is made, what's going on in the history of the school. It's not nothing that's, that I went through and was to get an understanding of what's going on. And I can't say what I want to say in three minutes, but what I'm going to say now, careful between. A principal, AAD, this vote need to come up with some type of resolution that they can know that if you're going to serve in that capacity at Buford High, this is what you need to know. The interview commission asked these questions.
Mr. Grayson, sorry for your time.
Thank you. Much more to be said, and I'm saying to you, if I'm there in the next 30 years to do an academic interview, what's that to say? I just got a couple of minute or so of finishing subjects.
I'm sorry, sir. But there is a second comment here, Mr. Davis. Geraldine W.
Don't start yet. Hi, I'm Geraldine though. I graduated from Buford High in 1971. It was the first class with, with all the schools that got together, Robert Smalls, Buford High, and St. Helena. Okay, three minutes. The class of 1971 was the first integrated class combined Robert Smalls, St. Helena, and Buford High.
You can't speak over the mic, so you can hear the voices in the machine?
I speak pretty well. The colors and the mascot were decided on by the students who met, representing each school. Green and white came from Robert Small color. Green and the eagle came from St. Helena. Green and gold was their color. And then the name Buford High was kept. Colors then were red and white from Buford High. But because they combined the school, everybody had to get pieces of the wrong. Okay? So we left Buford High with the name because this is Buford. So we came over to Robert Smalls. As you can see, I have green and white, beautiful color. And the eagle in that mascot does not look like this. When we went out on the field, we were just bumfing that they had that out there. 50 years and we had a slow transition. We were one of the best. Upstate, they had a mess. But Buford County, we did wonderful. So let's keep on doing good. Okay? So why change something that is going well? And the children, our children, they are lost because they need to know the history. Black, white, Mexican, whatever. We need to know the history. That's why that eagle is there. So I want you all to put in your mind, just, just think about the school that you came from. And if they change your mascot, the memories you have, we were so, it was terrible. But we saw whatever you all had out there. Nothing wrong with the eagle. That's a good bird. Okay? Number one. And I'm gonna keep my minutes. But I just wanted to say that, just put in your mind and heart, that for the children's sake, the children, the future, they'll know why they're at Buford High and how it came about. That's all I'm asking you all. Nothing too hard to do. The children, the children don't have no problem with it. It's the seniors. We are the ones that got the problem. The children will never have no problem, but it's us. Ah, thank you all for everything. Thank you.
Thank you. You see the greens?
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, superintendents, coordinators. I thank you for giving all of us this opportunity to speak to you frankly. I'm not the graduating class of 1971 from Buford High School, the first graduating class, as Ms. Stone said, since the three schools came together. It's really good to see everyone come together and focusing on something we have in common. If we wanted to divide ourselves on our differences, we would end up being a community of one. But here we have white folks, black folks, young, old, that have decided to come together. This is the same thing that happened in 1969, in the spring of 1969, when the school board met to decide how we're going to have integration in Buford. Judge McDomick said that Buford was an example here now. Buford was an example in 1971, the smoothest transition, not only in the state of South Carolina, but throughout this country or the southern states. Well, that's, it does hurt when we see someone be very careless about history. And it's much more than just changing the mascot. It is indeed changing our history. The challenge really lies with you all. There is in place something that will protect what has happened. Those guidelines were not followed. The changing of a mascot is a board issue, not a principal, not a superintendent. This is your policy. Why that was not followed, I don't know. But if it was followed, we would not have to be here. We would not have to tell you our history. And we learn a lot more about the history. When we came to the 50th anniversary, the very first stop we made was to see the pillars, Mr. Glady and his committee orchestrated. And this, at that school, and this is what we have that came out of it. And thank you for allowing me to see.
Thank you. I'm reading, but is it Miss Moore?
Good afternoon. Anne.
Linda Anne Moore. I can read it as a stroke words.
Good evening. I stand before, before you all are ready to go there, from August 5th, 2021. I decided I'm going to the open house for Buford High. These photos, I know you have seen them because this is the new uniform that was designed by who was authorized at Buford High to do this. And it upset me too because I was one of those ones that voted for the eagles to remain, the color white and green to remain, and that Buford High remain. Now, we need to get to the bottom of this to find out if you all did not authorize this, who authorized this? And we're not happy. I'm not happy. And if you all did not authorize this, you should not be happy either. So I ask you all to go before who you think did this and come back and make it back like how you speak. Buford High, eagle, green and white color. Where's the black? Who put these black in here? There's no black should be in this color. Okay? So we got standards for right. And the right thing for you all to do is give us back our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mary B. Moore?
Good evening. Protocol has been established. I just want to know, you know, I want to know how many of you graduates or even attended any of these schools that sit on this floor? One.
Hi, Deb.
As, as a retired, disabled veteran of the United States Army, the military, the eagle is, it plays a big part. It's significant. I mean, you, all you have to do is read the story about the eagles. I am proud. I am proud. I attended St. Helena and Buford High. And it's painful. That, that was painful when I heard that. And what's the justification behind it? How long did you know? What members did you inform your district that what was going on? That's what's supposed to happen. We put you there to keep us informed. That's not being done. And I would appreciate it if you all do things a little different and think about the people here because, you know, that's painful to me because as an African-American woman, I had a lot of trials and that, I had my rights taken from me a lot. And right now, you're doing something and I have no input. I don't even know about it. How many of you all know about this report tonight?
How many of you all know about this important night? Or if you are, someone called you? That's not the real business. We, you all have a standard. And I pray, I pray that it's a standard that's equal to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roland Gardner?
Chairman, it's Dr. Rodriguez. It is my pleasure to extend before you to talk about the passion that you had in your mighty voices about St. Helena Eagle. I can tell my age. I accepted the keys to St. Helena in 1953 when this is self-consolidated. I can tell my age, standpoint of working there as a coach, as a teacher. I had distinct pleasure of actually being the mentor for your global, you know, football scouts, not my A and T, my alma mater. I'm proud of that. So they talked about blank combining three schools. I was a part of that. I had distinct pleasure in 1971 when they talked about combining Buford High, Robert Smalls, and St. Helena. It wasn't the adults that pushed this. It was done by the students. We selected those members from those three schools that were going to be seniors at Buford High the next year. Going from St. Helena, got Robert Smalls. But they did it without arguing, without any discussion. The transition for integrating schools in the state of South Carolina, the model was done hand-to-hand. I was the guidance counselor. I was asked to come to Charleston at that time, just before this happened in 1973, 63. My father sat, used to be today, on the school. My dad was one of the people who talked about what they're gonna do in two years. He died before him. So we look at those things, we look at those three schools. But the transition was very easy. It was made among the students. There wasn't any major discussion. Tyler Wade, Buford, Ben Gray, Robert Smalls, Jones, Green and White, St. Helena Eagle, Green and White. Those things stood with me for a number of years as I went throughout this country and seeing how people can get along. You'd ask the question, why would Buford so be the transition? Then it was discussed. This town is having Penn Center here. It was 10 things different rather than Penn, when models came. We knew how to transition, how to work together. But there is a way to get things done. When you vote, you discuss it among yourselves. You come forward and say, let's get it done. I am proud of the eagle. When St. Helena opened in 1953 and they closed Penn Center, there wasn't a discussion about what mascot was going to be. There were two eagles on St. Helena. One was by Penn Center, St. Helena, L.A., and then, and they soared like it. It made me proud. We said, we want to be a part of that. So the passion that you see from these people, myself, about that mascot, about what we had then, is the bald eagle. Philadelphia Eagles, we have. We have the eagle.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph Richardson?
Gentlemen, school board, Dr. Rodriguez. Uh, I'm here, it's already been stated by a lot of the others that are here for the same purpose, that we disagree with that replica that has been placed around the school. And in 1971, when all schools came together, the, the green and white, uh, the eagle, St. Helena, the green and white, Robert Smalls, the red, Tyler Wade, Buford High, all that merged. And this is what we became. This is who we are. This is who we are. And everybody on the back of their shirt. It was something in Buford County School District in the state of South Carolina. Like you said, it was a model for not only the state of South Carolina, but the whole country. And this is, you have to understand, this desegregation. It's kind of rough times. Get all white schools together with two black schools, one in the city, one on the island. What we did. And everybody was proud of it. And we've been proud of that since 1971, when we went there. We stacked up against each other in double sessions. There were so many kids at the school, graduating class of 700. We had a split session. Got to ride the bus, 12 o'clock, get to school, get out at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock. Early session. My brother was part of the 71st graduate class. I was Robert Smalls' general. I had friends who were St. Helena eagles. I had friends who were even not entitled. But we all came together. And we liked that for revenge. We don't need a replica. We just need our eagle back.
Thank you. Mr. Ronnie Smith?
Thinking back on what everybody else has said, like Roland, like Al, I'm sorry. I graduated from Robert Smalls High School. And I don't lie until in my age, I graduated in 1968. I passed three score and 10. We were hard together to accomplish what we did during integration. And to see it being taken away without even any consideration to the members of the Robert Smalls Association, St. Helena Association, and even the member from Buford High School passing 1971 and beyond. How is it that, and we use the term that we used to use back in the day, those people who come here can tell people who've been there what to do? If you stand in our shoes to see where we could to get to this point, then I don't think we would have been here having this discussion about an eagle. Robert Smalls, Jones, we didn't argue. We loved Al Jones and I stand a proud Jones. But we went along to get along, to make things smooth transition so we can leave history for our children. But to come here and see that our history is not even being considered is upsetting.
Yes.
It's degrading.
Yeah.
And to see that you are the board. Are supposed to make the decision that we allow other people to do. So I think that if you all go back together and look at this, what has happened, I think you'll come back to the conclusion that the eagle that I listed should still be. The green and white of Robert Smalls should still be. So if we're gonna do this, then we can go back and say, let's change the name of the school. We've had that to happen too. Robert Smalls International Academy was changed without the community knowing anything about it. And I understand that's in the work again to change the name. Why don't just change it back to Robert Smalls School and accept the fact that that's what it is? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, are you ready?
Let's see. Not now, because I didn't have some minutes. That the citizens of Ukraine are suffering right now because they're being attacked by a communist building. And they would love to have the opportunity that we have right now to come out and talk about what their issues are. So let's remember them in our prayers, you know, tonight and throughout the evening. I'm also a graduate, 19, a graduate of 1971 Buford High School. Before then, Steve, me and myself and others, we were at Buford Junior High together. So we were together for over six years in the Buford school system, and we enjoyed it. The transition that we had in 1971 was considering, brought two rival schools together, St. Helena and Robert Smalls. And we all got along. We should be proud of that. We should be celebrating that. Okay? We should be teaching our kids that we came together and we all got along, had a very, very smooth transition. There was no fussing and fighting on school grounds. And we should be proud of that. We should celebrate that. We should share that with others. I believe most of us here believe in God. Okay? And we say we want to be a child of God. Well, if we're a child of God, then we're brothers and sisters. Okay? If you're a child of God, then you, 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 and everyone behind me, we are brothers and sisters. Read Romans, chapter 14, 1 through 29. If someone does something to offend you. Okay? Romans 14, 1 through 29. If something is done to offend someone, then you don't do it. If it offend, if I offend someone by wearing catty pants, I'm not gonna, doesn't mean I'm not, I wouldn't wear it around them, but I'm still gonna wear it. This is offensive.
Yes.
Okay? And you, and maybe those who did it, maybe want to make these changes, didn't know that. But it is. And you've heard our brothers and sisters say, this is the yearbook for 1971. And you can see the eagle, Buford High, and the colors. Okay? It means a lot. But it is something that we should celebrate. Okay? And not just be cast aside. It's not gonna help, it's not gonna help win any more football games or improve their SAT tests or do any, or raise the teacher's salary. It's not gonna help any of that. And that's a challenge. I know that the school board is always worried. So let's keep it the way it is, the way it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rose Anthony, your hand is up?
No, I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, okay. We have some phone, can you?
Hello, this is Barbara. I'm calling you for public comments. I'm gonna put you on speaker. You'll have three minutes. You ready? Now.
Three minutes, okay.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Barbara Porche. I teach at Robert Smalls. And I'm an elementary teacher of top fifth graders and fourth graders, teacher of construction. And I'm just calling you to really give my word and Dr. Rodriguez and Keena Campbell, Dr. Campbell, about the African-American history education conference that I was able to attend. It was, it was the best, um, it was, it was the best PD or, um, education that I've had in the four years I've been in Buford County. Um, I need to know about Robert Smalls. And I do know a little bit about Robert Smalls because I am not from here. And I'm a part of the Golaric ancient heritage. So I need to learn about it because my kids are. And when my kids are, she knew who they are. They are more powerful and they're strong and they're able to articulate, um, where they come from and what is important to them. And they have such a rich heritage. And, um, knowing their past is important. So I need to understand their past to teach that to them. And there were so many speakers that were amazing and just outstanding. They were able to put words to my feeling. I'm not, I'm not very, I'm not a good public speaker. But I think the most important thing that you should understand is the feeling that I took away from that and that I'm gonna be able to show with my children that the personal story, um, that, that's what formed who we are and how we interact with the world around us. And it's the best way to teach our children when they're able to connect with, um, the emotions and the strength of the characters in the stories. These stories are around people that we live with, right around us. So, um, I, so just, I give my personal testimony is I came away feeling, um, loved by the humor and the kindness and the no judgment that, um, people shared with me over this conference time was just powerful. And I think that what sort of changed the world and certainly has changed me and I'm gonna thank you all for sharing it with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have another call?
I have one more. Then I'll try to reach them. Hello, this is Barbara Laurie. I'm gonna put, I'm calling you for public comments. I'm gonna put you on speaker. You'll have three minutes. You can start your first and last name. Yes, ma'am. Are you ready? Go ahead, please.
Good evening. Members of Buford County Board of Education, Dr. Rodriguez.
You have to mute your, your tele, your television.
Amen. Yes, ma'am. Members of the Buford County Board of Education, members of the Buford County Board of Education,
Go ahead. Are you, we can start again. We got.
I have another question, Mary.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay. I'm sorry. To the members of the Board of Education, Dr. Rodriguez, all in attendance, that name, Kristen? Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm sorry. Um, to the members of Buford County Board of Education, Dr. Rodriguez, all in attendance. Two years I have.
Keep going.
I am Barbara Laurie. And my comments are related to the transformation of the mascot at Buford High. And all is already focused. My question, who, what, when, and why? The historical, the near again of the mascot. I was one of the students and masters from the former Robert Smalls High School who sent the student representative from St. Helena High School, Buford High School, to discuss the oversight with the opportunity to come up with a resolution about what will be the mascot, the colors, and the name of the school that would be a consolidated high school, rising three high schools, north of the border. The process is that they all made tremendous sacrifices that were done without any major disruption to the educational process. And the result, before the fall of the 1971 school year, those green, purple, colored those green upon apple colored Mass High as school names were in place. So fifty years later, change whether the addition or deletion of the Mass High is viewed by me and many who have spoken before me as being just back home. This is my untold story, along with many others that needs to be told. But in the meantime, the historical significance of the Mass High as defined by students needs to be placed to remain as the only Mass High for the Buford High School. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Do you have one more?
Is this Ms. Drake? Yes, I'm, I'm putting you off for public comments. Uh, you'll have three minutes and you can just, um, state your first and last name. Please mute your TV so you don't get the feedback. Thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Janelle Drake. I would like to specifically say, um, and I am, here's what everything that I am hearing. Um, I am one of the original persons who integrated the schools at Buford County along with myself, Colonel Clark, Craig Washington. Craig and I were graduates of class of 1971. And I just want to read something really quick that was stated at, uh, the Union of the Three. We held, um, they might sure have worked, but we proved their watch. We didn't know then, but we know now that Buford Trail Raiders, these two years I've worked out of the years, we think are the strongest role players in the history of Buford County schools that should be revered. The class of 1971 set an example of extraordinary and comely and we, we said the bar back was hot when those future classes followed. Excepting this force to be leaving things in respect and honor of the creed by Buford High School Eagles. Um, as we celebrated our fiftieth anniversary, we noticed that the American bald eagle was advertently reduced with ineffective, almost catastrophic like joy of our original Mass High. Not only was it disrespectfully changed without due process, but it also disrespecting the honor of the honor of the high school Mass High in addition to changing the, interchanging the colors of Robert Smalls. This within itself is an insult and disgrace to the history and formation of a school which literally sheds blood and tears. If we do not stand by history, then we will fall for anything. And my question is, should allow our history to be ignored? So my appeal is that our original American eye bald eagle be returned along with any other change that has been made from the original things that were set by us. These paths will kill the power that needs to restore these things to the original, um, things that were set by us. And we both, I also ask that if you put it right, you got organized as a county as a historical murder. We're interested in our loud saying being heard. And I want to thank you again for the time. Um, again, my last words are eagle, bye.
Thank you. That's a conclusion. As I said at the beginning, the board cannot respond to you by policy via a story you heard. Anytime does the chairman's report? Was after our school certification had its annual revision? Nope, had, unfortunately coincided with the African-American history education. So a few members, depending on time, I don't think they would have decided, so you've got to look up here.
I was, I was just asking.
Are you?
Yes, I was.
Just slightly excited. Most of us can watch for the certification and try to figure out. There were some interesting things for my first night at the store. There were some interesting things. Um, I went to a, to a session about, I went to a year round school and found out that it was a hell of a lot more complicated than I ever did. And also there was a very good session on finance on one. Um, it's several people said it was really, really good. So those were a while ago. And we already heard how committees in the African-American History Education Conference was, um, it was good to cut off that you, again, although it's not an honor, et cetera. Under the chairman's report, I'll just remind everyone, you have to mark certain, feel like you're staying in that honor interest with that information. And you, it is new this year, so you have to reestablish your passport behind you. Committee reports. Academics, committee, Mr. White?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that's maybe met, um, when it was the twenty-third and, um, they'll, uh, for what versions of the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar were presented and the preferred version that was, um, put forth by the staff will be presented through this evening, um, later in the, uh, in our agenda. Um, our next meeting is the thirtieth of, um, March. You feel sorry for that?
Thank you. Ad hoc Bluffton Growth Committee, Dr. Zesinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, the ad hoc Bluffton Growth Committee met on the seventeenth of February and our main item of conversation at that meeting, um, was a conversation and a presentation from Buford County Treasurer, Maria Walls. Um, she's been very gracious to come and report to us and provide us with updates on tax collections and trends that they are seeing at the treasurer's office. Um, some notable things were that new construction presently in, in 2022, um, is looking like it's already approximately half of what 2021 was. Um, property transfers are up, vehicle accounts are also up and, and voluminous. One of the things that, um, I mentioned to the committee was any considerations that we do give for, um, you know, another school site in the Bluffton area will need to take into account the increased vehicles that are on the road as well, um, and the accessibility that that school will need to be able to provide, um, to students and their families. Um, one thing, I think we've mentioned this before, is that the tags or the, the numbers that are identified for the Bluffton area are numbers six hundred and six ten. So as you look through those documents that are in board docs, um, you can pay attention to, to those specifically in relation to Bluffton. Um, and then, uh, I just wanted to make note in regard to impact fees. I know Dr. Guads has been following closely the impact fee discussion, um, in Bluffton. There is up for your review, if, if anybody wants to take a peek at it. There is the Town of Bluffton's, uh, meeting from February eighth. The video is up and you can go directly to the impact fee discussion to see what was discussed there. And there is a Town of Bluffton meeting coming up on the eighth, although the agenda is not available, um, quite yet. And that concludes my report unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the technology committee, Ms. Spohr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we met on February seventeenth. Myself, Colonel Guyer and Minister Smith. Um, and it was a great time for a meeting because as we did just announce an executive session, uh, we're beginning the process of a technology needs assessment throughout the district. Uh, so we discussed that and the scope of that, um, our key, which will include network hard, network hardware, um, safety, security, data automation, um, classroom instructional education technology. So we're looking at overseeing that process, um, that information will be gathered and used in a developing the district's latest technology plan. And the current plan that's on our district is from 2016 to 2019. Um, so it is out of date, but the state of South Carolina, uh, right about the time we needed to, uh, submit our newest version of the technology report, asked the district to hold off because the state of South Carolina was reviewing their template. Um, that was at the end of 2019 and then, of course, COVID, so everything's been kind of put on hold. The state has released its, uh, updated template for our technology plan and this spring, uh, the technology team will be meeting to work on their technology plan and hopefully have that submitted this summer. So the, the technology plan that's on our desk, on our district is out of date, that a new one should be coming soon. Uh, we talked a little bit about the broadband initiatives, uh, through the office of, uh, through the broad, Office of Broadband Regulations, there's an R there somewhere, um, that they're working with the schools and with the county to try and make sure that we are providing internet to every household, uh, and every student in Buford County. Uh, finally, we talked a little bit about the technology base scope and we're going to work some more on the OB because OB seventeen, the current administrative technology is both too much and not enough all the same time. So we're going to be working on that and trying to get a more strategic focus. Um, our next meeting is going to be on Wednesday, March thirtieth at two o'clock. And I think on the time, and we'll be reviewing, uh, recommendations to look at some of that, uh, sections of that OB.
Thank you. Well, man, so move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. The first item on the superintendent's report is on student achievement. And we wanted to just follow up and just put a recap on the African-American History Conference and to actions that are, have already taken place after.
All right. Good evening, all chair members of the board. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your support. It was so wonderful seeing all of our board members at our first annual his, African-American History Education Conference. And it, it really meant a lot. Um, as you know, we have a jam packed three day conference that was intentionally planned for attendees. We kicked off Friday, February eighteenth, on the grounds of the Technical College of the Low Country. And on Saturday, February nineteenth, we moved to the campus of the University of South Carolina Buford. And concluded on the historical grounds of Penn Center on Sunday. Our keynotes for the three days included, uh, Victoria Smalls, Dr. Najima Thomas, and Nick Ethan. Um, there were approximately two hundred eighty people who attended the conference in any combination of the three days. Conference and attendees included district board members, principals, assistant principals, teachers, support staff, students, parents, college students from Technical College of the Low Country and the University of South Carolina Buford, local artists, state leaders, Buford City Mayor, Buford City Councilman, South Carolina State Representative, retired educators, military officials, historians, district office staff, a representative from the Civil Rights Center in Columbia, educators from the following states, Illinois, North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida, all in attendance to learn more about the African-American history of Buford County. We offered twenty-one breakout sessions for participants, participants to choose from, two of which were breakout sessions for our students. We offered three tours, touring historical landmarks around Buford County. We had six students' performances. Seventeen students from Battery Creek Culinary Arts Program helped to prepare a delicious lunch on Friday. Thirty-one people participated in a debrief on yesterday. One hundred and ten attendees with an open survey, uh, completed a survey as of today. Participants who completed the survey responded to one question that we asked. What specifically did you learn from the conference? And here are four direct quotes. I learned the history of Shaclin School and the distinguished service of the Margaret Hoyt Marines in Cork. Being relatively new to the area, I found all aspects of this conference tremendously educational and valuable. I specifically learned a lot about the history of African-Americans in this area and the rich culture of the Gullah. Third quote, I lived here all my life and I didn't know the significance of Michael C. Rode. Fourth quote, I learned a great deal about the specific stories of the African-American experiences during enslavement, the Civil War and Reconstruction. I experienced these stories through visual arts, lectures, and performances. I learned about many resources, human and historical, that are available in Buford County. I witnessed the great passion of the native families of these stories to be told. I realized that there is so much more for me to learn about the history of Buford so that I can share complete and accurate evidence. Members of the board, these were only a few examples of what attendees learned at our first annual African-American education conference. As we learn, we grow, and as we are able, and then we're able to build capacity as educators, which in turn benefits all students that we serve. As a reminder, one of the goals for the State Department of Education is to assist in providing high quality resources to appropriately celebrated Black history people. Well, in my professional opinion, Buford County School District achieved that goal February eighteenth to the twentieth. I would like to leave you with a big. Well, I know there's not a vote, but hopefully we'll see everyone next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Next item, uh, she working everybody out of fiscal responsibility. Uh, Fanya and I, uh, and Carol Brett Gill attended a Hilton Head, uh, town council workshop and had a chance to discuss and reuse a law of the Greenfield, uh, Greenway, uh, county.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as Dr. Rodriguez mentioned, uh, we had a great conversation. Uh, the three of us had a great conversation with the staff of, excuse me, Hilton Head County Council. Um, Eric Greenway as well was there and actively participated in the discussion. Uh, we provided sort of a, a background information on impact fees just to reiterate, uh, the purpose of, uh, why we're coming forward and, and posing, um, advocating for school impact fees for Buford County, uh, as well as financial impacts and, uh, capital projects that had already been accomplished. and are being planned for the future. So basically, everything that's in the impact fee study, they've already been given, and you've already received. And so just summarizing some of that information, and then just reiterating a couple of main points that were of interest to the town of Hilton, and we thought would be useful for their input in their discussion, particularly the fact of the study having been completed as a partnership with county, and then also any updates to the study would be required within the five-year period and that sort of thing. So the discussion was, there was some great conversation, great questions. We came, sort of came in the middle of an affordable housing conversation, and so that was really the highlight of the discussion that we had. They're very concerned, as you can understand, living in this area, that the impact of the, or the need for affordable housing in that area, having people live and work on the island. And we felt it firsthand, having driven at 8:30 in the morning. We were, it began at 9:00, so you can imagine what the traffic was like coming from northern Beaufort County all the way there, which took quite a while. So I completely understood what they were talking about, needing to actually work on the, live on the island in order to be able to make it to work timely and that sort of thing without the extra, the added time on the road. So traffic is definitely forced to be reckoned with in that area. Another major area that they focused on was what other alternatives do we have for capital improvements, funding capital improvements in our county? And school districts in South Carolina are very limited on what they can do. We don't pursue state funding, as you know, but we are limited to the 8% capacity and the referendum funding, so lower approval. So that was very interesting. We mentioned that a few times and continue to have discussions on that aspect. And then overall, we just talked about the goals of balancing the funding sources that impact fees would help to benefit and potentially offset some of the tax, potential tax increases that may be needed for future public projects. So it was a great discussion. We, of course, again, it was a work session, and so we anticipate that it will be on a future agenda. The Hilton Head Town Council meetings are the same evenings of ours as the Beaufort County School Board meetings, and so I would anticipate, we'll be looking for the March 15 meeting, see if it may be on the agenda at that point in time, and then we'll be also looking at the town of Hilton, see when there could be as well. So, that's all.
You know, Ms., but I will throw in my two cents. I think the affordable housing issue is confusing. I think that's probably, I think that's a false flag that you're just putting up. So I think there are two separate issues. Sorry.
I disagree on the affordable housing. Because I do think that that's, is there any way, like they just had an article on the topic about Habitat for Humanity and the housing they're trying to build? The impact to new homes in my neighborhood, $10,000 per house, is, I think, maybe by pay to support education. I think, is there any way to exempt nonprofits, Habitat for Humanity, anything else that we designate as workforce housing? Because one of the concerns I have, you have to increase density on Hilton Head at $5,000 an apartment. That's a substantial deterrent. So I know that there are three major apartment complexes going on right on 170, right at the border, within Beaufort city limits. And so because Beaufort's not part of that, I guess the unincorporated county is, if they did it on the unincorporated county, they would get the impact fee. But if they do it in the city of Beaufort, that that's not an impact fee, is that right?
The service area covers every, the property to the south of the drawl reserve. So that is the service area that would be, the impact fee would be imposed on.
And I'm not certain that's not an incentive to some of these developers to put up the new housing complex and apartment houses right on the edge of that area. Teachers are living there. And I also think that, you know, I read an article that said, by the time you pay for mortgage payments, because most of these people in affordable housing are going to have mortgages, substantial mortgages, the low-down payments, that they will end up paying triple the amount of the impact fee by the time the mortgages pay off. So I can tell you that as someone on Hilton Head, the affordable housing, they use very much of a concern. I think most of them on Hilton Head love to work for the school district, but I think it's something we need to think about and address and come up with some plans with the town. I don't think it's a false flag at all.
Thank you. There was actually some discussion. Mr. Greenway mentioned there is some funding that is available to support workforce housing, and that he could be, he could be in further discussions with town council to offer some potential funding options. The fee has, must be provided 100% to the school district, but can be funded through if the town decided to discount that fee, then the county could put in money to make it whole and make it whole to the district. So there are funding opportunities outside, and there are things in the works, discussions in the works that are happening.
Yeah, it sounds like you're hearing that argument and coming up with some of these solutions.
Mr. Greenway's been very active in that area, so I think he'll be very. Thank you.
Mr. Spohr. Actually, I must say that I definitely do agree with the discouragement you've just shown, especially alongside Tom too. A lot of, I'm concerned that what we're calling affordable housing are not really affordable housing. And not only are they not affordable houses for the, the people who live there who are from there, but they're not only affordable houses for the, for the faculty and staff and people who teach here as well. So I think that that whole conversation of affordable housing is a conversation that has to be deep and rooted, and it has to be a clear picture of exactly what is affordable housing, because too many times they kick the word, and especially versus, they kick the word off of affordable housing. I remember I went to a meeting probably about two years ago, and there was a bunch of religious, they had a meeting in Beaufort County, they were talking about partnering at that time with affordable housing. And I'm here to tell you that what they were saying that affordable housing was, was not affordable housing. And so it concerned me when we jumped behind things and we said that they are affordable housing and it's not real affordable housing, because you come and it's affordable for who? Where? What? Why? And how? So the goal of the question that go along with that, and I hope that when they kind of come forward, that they're willing to define that clear, clear understanding that, especially when it works something in terms of teachers, where we already have teachers who are asking for, 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 for a moment right now, so they can afford to teach you. So I just want to put that out there. So I hope when they come forward, they're going to have a clear understanding of what we consider as affordable housing. Thank you.
Senator Cooper, hands.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the superintendent's report is on other matters, and that is, under other matters, and that is the opening update. We're seeing, continue to see the decrease in COVID cases for last week. Last week, the school system reported to DHEC one positive staff case, nine positive student cases. It was, it used to run significantly. We continue to review each school's situation daily, which, looking at it school by school, is going to be increasingly important as we march on. As you know, DHEC changed their criteria on the school and child care exclusion list once again, stating this time that as of March 1st, school districts stop quarantining and contact tracing if they have two consecutive weeks with less than 10% of their students and staff population testing positive for COVID-19. This is that they stated that if a school had 10% or more of their students and staff population testing positive for two consecutive weeks as moving forward, that the school would reinstate their school exclusion list criteria, and that includes the test stay program. This would be done on a school-by-school basis. The Beaufort County School District has met the DHEC criteria at each and every school, and as a result, no longer be quarantining or contact tracing, as per the DHEC school exclusion list criteria, unless a particular school has 10% or more of their student and staff population testing positive for two consecutive weeks.
That was special. Good night. Okay. Move to our business action. Approval of the 2022-2023 draft academic calendar. No presentation for Dr. Schatz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. This evening, I bring forward the 2022-2023 draft school calendar review. The calendar process started in early November and has had collaborative input from a diverse group of stakeholders. This included district personnel from instructional services, directors, coordinators, members of the Finance and Human Resource Departments, senior staff. Additionally, focus groups from school-side administrators and school personnel were included. Included in the school draft calendar are provisions of the state of South Carolina Code of Laws titled 59/1/425, Education Code, as, as is follows. All school districts are required to establish a calendar with 190 days, which must include a minimum of 180 days of instruction covering at least nine months, at least three, three days to be used as makeup days, and three scheduled days used for collegial professional development. No more than two days may be used for preparation of opening of schools, and the remaining five days may be used for teacher planning, academic plans, and parent conferences, for a total of 10 professional development days. All school districts, including those approved as e-learning districts in the e-learning pilot project, must include rescheduled weather makeup days. Please note that we are within that pilot. Beginning with the 2007-2008 school year, the opening date of students must not be before the third Monday in August. To add, members of each focus group shared additional suggested calendar criteria: Distribution of professional days throughout the school year, with the adding of two PD days at the start of the second semester; placement of half-days at the end of the marking quarter and last day of school; ending of first semester at winter break; Veterans' Day as a holiday for all BCSD employees; consideration of short breaks throughout the academic school year; provision of additional professional development days throughout the school, at school year and within the semester; designing a summer school within the month of June. To add to these considerations are the following points: High school students early graduation; students entering due enrollment or early college entrance in the month of January; additionally, deployment of students in mid-January to the military. Noting the difference of days within each semester that totaled a spare requirement of 180 student contact days, I would like to share also that all scores of students passing the end-of-course examinations were exceeded by the spring data. So allowing for these items, I do want to present to you the 2022 and 2023 BCSD academic calendar. Thank you, Mrs. Bush, for being able to bring that up. You should have two documents. One is a Word document that would have given you similarities. I've actually given that to you in the narration, and if you'd like, I will walk through the calendar that is up on screen at this time. The preferred calendar, if we look at the month of August, allows for the first week of August, three days, but we are seeking to do a summer institute that is just there as an FYI. If we look at August 8th, that would be the first teacher contact day within the schools. Two of those days would be, should be given to our teachers for preparation as legislation shares. First day of student contact would be August 15th. If we turn the page into the next month, we will look and see that is a general month where you have a day off for a holiday. If we look at October 22nd, I apologize, October, we have a half-day on the 14th at the end of the first quarter, with the provision of the 17th of October as a day off for educators and students. If we look at November, we have Veterans' Day off on the 11th. Holiday break for us. Thanksgiving will start on that Wednesday. Students return on the 28th. In the month of December, looking at the 19th and 20th, if you look at that holiday break, those are identified as makeup weather days, and again, we do qualify to be a virtual opportunity for that to happen, not face-to-face, but actually with utilization assumed. If we look at January, and I have to like pause, January of 2023, we have two professional development days as our teachers and students return during that week. The first two days will allow PD. Then we have students returning on the 30th. February 2023, we have the 10th off, which is a Friday. We are trying to align the work that accompanied by Dr. Nikki and Kavala team to identify that as the weekend of the next upcoming African-American indigenous conference here in Beaufort County. Look at the 9th of that week as an opportunity for field experience and field trips are bringing in more of our students, as we design the conference for the upcoming academic school, school year, an opportunity of more integration of our students and teachers. The 20th is a federal holiday of February, and it'll be led up to the month of March. We close the marking period, which is the third marking period with a half-day, allowing parent conferences, and then another day off for our educators. During the month of April, we have one more weather day for makeup. Please note that April 7th is the Friday. Students will return after that holiday break on the 17th of April. And I do want us to recognize in the month of May, we are by legislation telling for 20 days from the last day of school, student contact for our teachers, that is the latest that we are able to start our standardized testing. And the month of June is self-explanatory, we end on a half-day, and then two PD days of closing out the academic year, our school and our students. I brought Mr. Daniel Fowles in as well here to see if he can bring any additional questions to the calendar that may refer to any type of data. That's why I had him here as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Schatz. Dr. Schatz, I don't have any questions. I did attend the academic committee, and my question, so Mr. Chair, so thank you. I just want to seriously thank you for this calendar in regards to giving our teachers and students and families that break during the months of October and March, just one day to breathe, to regroup, to take a, take a really deep breath. And I, I think that's been doing wonders for our staff and students, and thanks for doing that. Appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Spohr.
In February, is, is, does anyone, anyone know in February, when will we have the normal board conference? Because I definitely don't want to run at conference during a normal board conference. That is concerning mine. That is concerning mine. Uh, back to four because it goes under two board conferences. I'll, I'll be wondering about that.
Mrs. Bush, you're right. You're spot. So the work that I did looking backwards, I went backwards mathing, Mr. Smith. It appears that our board conference was South Carolina polls on that third weekend in February. So that's why we did a couple weeks. So they would lend that opportunity for us. They had not published their dates, but I went back a few years on their literature. And that was to trend. Now, I, I can't control if they change those shit. But I did, I did do some research. Yes, sir.
This is, to me, deja vu all over again. I have a real problem with having an 84-day first semester and a 96-day second semester. I understand why we want to stop before the holiday break. And that to me is essential. And I don't think that's an argument. We have to stop. But a couple of months ago, you all came to us and you told us about the impact of seat time and student absences on academic achievement. He said, if you're not in class, you don't, you don't come to school, your performance suffers, and you had data to prove that. And so here we have a semester, the first semester, with six absences. To me, academic achievement is our first priority. And I understand all the issues about start times and so on. I understand about the chambers of commerce wanting to have our kids working so that we can support industry and tourism in this county. I, I find that very difficult to accept as being valid. That seems to me is, well, that's the way it's always been, and that's the way it's always going. I've lived here for 14 years. August is not the high point of the, of the tourist season. It's too hot. I have two grandsons that work in the summer. They work as lifeguards. They work at Paris Island, they've worked at the county swimming pool, they've worked at the city swimming pool, and they work at the, the Baby's Island Garden Stadium. They work, and they stop working while they, they, when school starts, they work after school. They don't work during school because all kids are not at the swimming pool. And I, I, I really want us to take real strong looks next year. And I realize the all-year-round schooling has a lot of hoops to go through to make happen. But Jasper County is doing it because Jasper County thinks that academic achievement is improved by year-round schools. I think the same. And I understand it takes talking to stakeholders and so on to make sure that we know what we're getting into and what the impact is. Academic achievement. 90 days in the first semester, 90 days in the second month. You know, I go in, I talked to both grandsons. I said, okay, how's first semester compared to second semester? First semester is a lot harder. They cram more in. Second semester can be not so bad. They actually kind of like that because they like to have time dog in the spring. But academic achievement. So I'm, I'm certainly going to vote to approve this. I'm not going to say it because it's too late to change. And I realize there's a whole lot of coordination that has to be done to make an alternative viable. And, but we've said this the last two years as well. I would like to see personally a little more effort into looking at how we can balance the two semesters. I think that it can be done if academic achievement is our top priority.
Senator Burgham? Mr. Burgham?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I agree with the guy. As far as Taurus. When I first came on this board, we didn't, we didn't have. I would have changed for seven of us, some folks who were in there started complaining that people not, students did not, um, get a job. Well, the only students that can get a job on this next student is literally because the students that are on this side, that table, have went over there and applied, and they were hired. So I think that, like the other guy said, we didn't try to look at this. You know, we are not here to make sure. Taurus seating is, is, we're here to give children. Like he said, if we are going to solve the achievement gap, then we need to do that. Be focused more on that. Thank you.
Senator.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we approve the 2022-23 calendar as presented this evening.
Senator. Senator.
Thank you, Chairman, Senator. Mary and Dr. Rodriguez, I do believe that you feel that academic achievement is the highest priority. And I would like for you to have the opportunity, Dr. Shrouds, to maybe explain the difficulty of having a 90-day when you are mandated by the State of South Carolina to not start student contact until the third Monday of August. And we know that the testing should be completed prior to the winter break. And we know that our students are on four by four. Okay, so could you just speak to that a little bit before we go up? Is that all right, Chair?
So as I shared in my opening narrative, we try to be aligned with what the state code is with the left calendar. We recognize that student achievement is a priority for myself, for the superintendent, Dr. Rodriguez, our team, and our educators. Our hands are held to what the legislation says that can be our first student contact day. Our focus groups did have a conversation on points that were going by Colonel Dyer, as well as, uh, Mr. Campbell, and looking at alternate calendars. In conversation with our focus groups, we recognize that it is more than just our, this group. It is actually a little larger conversation and larger points for consideration and discussion. Discussion came up on athletics, what would be the potential impact. Discussion came up on alignment in order to meet some of our January deadlines. It's a little larger than just having the immediacy of a few focus groups. So I do want to share that. Conversation has happened. So we were fortunate enough during COVID, and I, I'm not making any that COVID was a good thing, but we were very fortunate that our local universities worked with us and gave us a trimester model. That is not an opportunity right now. So dual enrollment starting about the second week of January. So as we start looking into alternate calendars, we must be aligned with also our local universities and our new enrolled students. We do allow our students to continue during the summer. That is something that we negotiated again through COVID. We had about 83 students who were rather successful last summer. But again, we are timed with other calendars to meet the needs of students in high school. So conversations have started. However, we are rather constrained to what is actually written in the law for this time.
Thank you. Oh, no, I did take my hand down, sorry. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith.
Uh, let me just start off by saying, I definitely would like to thank you and Dr. Rodriguez and the staff for taking the time out to do this with them. I know that this, every year, this is definitely a, a, a tough decision on, on the board and also, uh, your staff with you as well. Because sometimes we do definitely get this emotion, but I definitely remember something that kind of I say expressly when it comes to the halftime of the screen, you know. But when I hear you break down what you need to break down, not only does that help the drive forward my decisions, but my only question, uh, to be quick and not to stall it, what to be, uh, and I'm sorry, I can, sorry, you know, I'm sure you have a ready and teachers that put, and this is where the teachers are struggling for, correct?
Yes, sir. DHEC representation, my teaching form, significant amount of difficult workshop with, and so, so yes, at the month of February 16th.
So with that, I'm, I'm definitely, am I a teacher supporter, so I will support the teachers and students. And I will support you so that we can get the educational processes and we can get to the role modeling and get things done. So I will definitely support this. I appreciate the work that's done. And it is definitely a testament. And I look forward to continually getting to see how this, how this new model works and see how long we can stay with it. That, that's, that's kind of my, all the things that we stay with once, so that we can actually see whether it's working or whether it's not. That's my only act that we took around this, right? Thank you.
I'll sit down one hand. Also, as both of my motions, my shooting waters. Continue.
I move that we approve the 2022-23 calendar as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wazniewski, aye.
Can you forget about Rachel before the verdict?
Thank you, appreciate it more, Mrs. Bush. Thank you, Chair.
Do you have a minute to send agenda?
I move we approve the incentive agenda.
Second motion. Sorry. I'll second the motion. Mr. Smith, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Future agenda comments? Mr. Smith?
I appreciate the fact that we, we did the, the mass project, that we did the, the mass house, the thought of the mass house.